Good morning. It is Tuesday, June 15, 2021, and I'd like to call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. And please stand if you are able and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why don't I take the first quote? With that, is there a motion to approve or to adopt today's agenda? So moved. Seconded, then moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Headed by? I'm just gonna check, is Supervisor Basil online? Okay. All right. Okay, great.
I'm here.
That's okay, we didn't see before. I just wanted to double check, so I'm glad you're able to join. Now is the time to open up for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? Not seeing any, anyone of the attendees? Nope, all right, we will close public comment number one. Next, we will move on to the proclamation recognizing June 19, 2021 as Juneteenth in Story County. And I've asked both my colleagues to join in the reading. We have the Juneteenth, Juneteenth commemoration. Whereas on January 1, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation went to effect, declaring 3.5 million enslaved African Americans in Confederate states to be free. And whereas in the Civil, as the Civil War ended two years later in April, 1865, and whereas two months after the Civil War concluded, when Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas port city of Galveston in 1865, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights and...
Whereas following his statement, June 19, or Juneteenth, became the emancipation day of those long deprived of freedom. And whereas Juneteenth celebrates the end of slavery in the U.S. as the proclamation reached the last remaining enslaved African Americans in the Confederacy. And whereas Juneteenth is a time for reflection and rejoicing, it is also a time for assessment of progress still needed.
Whereas the Story County Board of Supervisors acknowledges this shared history and commits itself to the principles of equity and justice, now therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2021, as Juneteenth in Story County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to recognize this day, participate in dialogue with one another about its significance, and collectively help further the promise of freedom and equity, equality for all.
Do we need a motion? I think we need a motion to adopt the...
I move adoption of the proclamation for Juneteenth commemoration in 2021.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Heads aye, proclamation is adopted. Next, we'll move on to agency reports. We have Stacy Lehman with the University Community Childcare for the annual report. Good morning, Stacy.
Good morning.
So we do have your report that you've provided to us. If you want to go over and highlight things on your report or if there's anything additional that you wanted to add since you've submitted?
Yeah, no, nothing really additional to the report, I sense. Just that, my name is Stacy Lehman and I'm the Director at University Community Childcare. We are a private nonprofit childcare center that's located just north of Iowa State University's campus. So what I have there in the report still stands, no changes need to be made.
I have no questions, very thorough report. Thank you.
I have one question, so let's see, COVID over the past year and stuff. So are you back up to your numbers that you were kind of free or?
No, so we had ended up closing mid-March and reopened our program beginning of June last year. So we've been open one full year during the COVID pandemic. During that entire year, we've been under reduced enrollment situations. So we've been kind of keeping our classes socially distanced. We've been limiting the number of kids that can enroll. Do anticipate with some additional staff hires to be able to get back to that normal enrollment this fall.
Great, great. Any other questions?
I have one, so with the lower enrollment, are you still experiencing a lengthy waiting list?
Yeah, right now, our waiting list is a bit different than it usually is. We have some families who are on the waiting list but don't necessarily want immediate care. You know, so in the past, we'd have a waiting list and we'd call out and they would take those spots right up. During the pandemic, we've seen more who we call out and they're maybe will wait, keep us on the list, we'll want to cycle through. So yes, the list is still there. The immediate need for those spots isn't always the same as it used to be.
Okay, thank you, thanks for explaining that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Stacy? No, well, thank you very much for your report and being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will move on to, we have a quarterly report from Emergency Management. Good morning, Keith.
Yes, this is where I'm supposed to sit?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief rundown of what we've been doing. I'll hit the highlights in the report that I submitted earlier with some areas that I think need specific focus. First off, COVID activities are winding down, but we are still providing some logistical support. We facilitated the distribution of six pallets of excess material to local first responders, hospitals, and long-term care facilities. We're hoping to use some grant money that we expect to be getting to do an after-action review of all of the, all of our COVID activities at the inter-jurisdictional level. We won't be delving into how the Board of Health and Public Health did their stuff or the local long-term care facilities, it'll be pretty much at our level. But we do encourage all agencies that have experienced COVID to look internally to figure out what they did right, what they did wrong, what we need to do to be prepared for a similar event in the future. We were asked to deploy our command trailer to Little Wall Lake during the recovery of the ISU students. And it highlighted the need for regular drills to utilize this kind of equipment and also the need to be able to work across county lines. During the deployment, we discovered that we had some electrical issues with the trailer, which had now been repaired. We needed to act as a radio charging station. So to rectify that, we now have a six-bay battery charger because the first responders out there are going to be using up their batteries. They can come to us and we'll be able to charge them and give them back to them. And also, it highlighted the need for us to be proficient at using our mobile bridging unit, it's an ACUM. So we got it out and we did some work with it, especially utilizing the new radios. So this will allow us, if we have the frequencies of our surrounding counties, to be able to onsite bridge radios amongst the different cross-county radio systems. Our STAR One search and rescue team was deployed Montezuma to assist with the search for the missing 11-year-old boy. It highlights the value of these kinds of volunteer teams. They spent 124 hours of their volunteer time out there assisting with the search, providing search management, acting as cadre for other search teams while they were out there. They use their unique capabilities in equine team, where they have horseback riders that are out there searching. Gives them the advantage, these horses are actually trained to do some scent tracking and also having the searchers up higher allows them to look down and to see things that might be missed. A really neat capability. Another thing is, they absorb the cost of 2,500 miles of travel back and forth between there. These folks do a fantastic job and they don't ask much back for it. And our agency is looking to, in the future, to try and spend some time in effort to work with these teams and develop more teams and to maintain them. Because as we all know, getting volunteers takes a lot of effort nowadays and especially those that have these special skills and do the administrative work prior to a disaster, their absolute goal to us during a disaster. As you might know, we have an intern now, which is fantastic, and he's been working with Melissa to develop training and operations package to establish the equivalent of REOC that we have downstairs in each community. But you might guess that when you're looking at communities from the size of maybe 500 to 800 on up to Ames, we have to make something that's tailorable for all the different agencies. And we put together a package that has standard operating procedures, checklist to help them, form to help them capture all of that data, which is essential to try and get the most you can out of FEMA reimbursement. Friday night, we had a meeting with the leadership of McCallsburg in zeroing to pitch this to them and they really liked the idea. Even more importantly, having those two communities together while we were discussing it, they are looking to continue this partnership for this training so that they will be more interchangeable between the two of them should there be a disaster. Now, we had all 15 of our communities here during the duratio, but that was an unusual situation. This will help improve our capabilities or really help those communities improve their capabilities to step up during a disaster, have that support structure for the incident commander and to be able to capture that information that they'll need later on down the road and also transition from response to recovery down the road. We've also been trying to do a planning, training, exercise survey. This survey is our attempt to gather information from our customers essentially to help us focus on their needs as a community when it comes to these kinds of activities. The other thing we've asked communities to do is, if you need planning activities, if you need training activities, if you need to do exercises, this represents a gap probably in your community's disaster response capabilities. We've asked the communities to get together with their first responders and the jurisdiction executives to look at their responses to be able to determine what is their gap, how big is the gap, how much they should devote resources to these gaps to be able to reduce that risk to a level that they find acceptable. I encourage the board supervisors to take this survey and also to possibly get with some of your other agencies. I know the Sheriff's Office has completed this so that you might look at your response to the rural community and how you might be able to service their needs better. We conducted some logistics training with the Story County Sheriff's Office Partners Group. If you're not familiar with this group, this is a group that trains on being able to respond rapidly to any potential abductions. Absolutely essential capability because those first few hours during an abduction are critical to successful resolution of the event. Our training was designed to educate them on the less boring part, or the more boring parts of that, the logistics aspects of response. We educated them on the different parts of the logistics system, but more importantly, the need to give us a call early so that we can help them establish that logistics system to be able to support the event should it stretch out to be multiple days or should we have like what happened up in Blackhawk County where they had 800 volunteers show up to be a part of the search. As part of this, we provided the equivalent of 70 student-hour training for them. On operations side, we're switching our mass notification system, not really us. Homeland Security actually provides the county's free mass notification system under a contract. Well, they have switched their contractor. And as a part of that, on the surface, the user's not going to see much difference except for improvements. Users will now be able to sign up for special weather alerts, be tornadoes, severe weather, flash floods or floods. They can sign up their entire family all in one location and they can also manage their own account. And additionally, they can provide a special information on medical needs of those so that we can gauge if an area is impacted, what kind of special needs we're gonna have. Melissa, on the other hand, has been working very diligently and a lot of hours importing the information from the old system into the new system, which was no small task. She's been working with users like our secondary roads folks who use this system to activate their employees during our winter weather emergencies to get them out there on the roads and getting them clearing the roads right away. She's also developing standard operating guides to make it so that users in the community can implement this new system quickly. And Story County, as an agency, might look into the idea of using this to notify internally. We can set it up so that you can have certain phone numbers within the agency or within your offices to get any alerts that we might send out or to get those special weather alerts. So if you're interested, please let us know and we'll work with you on that.
So is, are users of this, people who've signed up before, are they being transferred into the new system or does everybody, every resident who's in it have to sign up again?
We have imported their data. Unfortunately, we weren't able to extract all the information out of the old system. So their location, their address, we weren't able to port over. And to inform them of this new system, we're gonna send out in the last nine days of the old contract, we're gonna send out a notification to them highly suggesting that they register with the new system. We have imported all the landlines. Anybody who has a cell phone though, we can't get that data and all those users need to import it. Melissa's developing a public relations push on this to notify people of the new capabilities to really encourage them. And again, we're gonna send out messages using the old system to notify them. Then about a year from now, we're gonna say, we're gonna have to shut this old system down. You're gonna have to import your information on over.
So everybody should just go on to the new system?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, and it should take the initiative to do that?
Yes, and it's on our website, we've got a link to it or they can actually sign up through an app. And this app will allow you to even get alerts outside of Story County if it's in an area that is a, RAVE is the new contractor. If you're in an area that is serviced by RAVE, you'll get weather alerts and special notifications for that area.
Good for people to know that.
We're really gonna...
Keith, this is Latifah. The public relations material, is it going to be explicitly explained to folks that even if they signed up before, they need to sign up again because what they signed up for originally will not work anymore? My concern is people who just ignore it because they think, oh, I've already done that.
And that's why we're gonna make the push through the old system so that we can really target those folks. So they'll be receiving a text, whatever way they sign up to get their notifications via the old system, they will get a notification and we'll do that a couple of times to let them know to push on over to the new system.
Will there be capability with that notification for them to just give permission for their information to be transferred to the other system?
Unfortunately, no, because we extracted as much information as we could. They'll have to go in and sign up and they won't be able to take advantage of some of the newer capabilities, again, the weather alerts and stuff like that. So they'll really need to go to the new registration form and go all the way through it so that they can get the full capabilities out of it.
I'm thinking that, what is it, KHOI radio might be a good early morning spot to...
We talked to them about it yesterday.
Did you? Great.
So we've hit that point.
Okay, great.
And all the news, television news also, will you be, maybe should we get it out that way too?
We push out a notification, a media release on it. So far, we haven't had any real uptake on that, but we'll keep trying through that avenue also.
Okay, thanks, Keith.
We've been spending some time trying to revise our bylaws for emergency management to account for some changes that occurred in 2012 that impact those that can vote on budgetary issues. And it was the classic, the moment you start really delving into it, we found some other ambiguities that could be cleaned up, so we're in the process of doing that. We've also received a $27,000 grant to replace our backup EOC computers, which is fantastic. And we are going to shift the backup EOC computers we have now into the command trailer and some to RSVP to be utilized for volunteer reception center activities and any other activities that might be out there to maximize the use of them. We've also made contact, we happened to be driving by and saw the microgrid setup that's there by the power plant. And this allows, it has solar panels, it has batteries, and it can be used as alternate power should the grid go down. We got to looking at that and said, that could have some great capabilities, both for fixed facilities and also as a mobile capability. And we've started discussions with Iowa State, with Homeland Security to look at what would it take to be able to truly change this from prototype to something that can be implemented. And they are interested in possibly allowing us to use hazard mitigation grant money to purchase these. We've been trying to set up an appointment to, first off, talk internally within Story County Administration as to its capability and I'll take this out to other communities. But this could be a great opportunity for us to have something. As we saw with the power outages, it might be a little bit of light in the darkness after a massive grid failure. So looking forward, our intern is going to start working with the local volunteer agencies to collect and disseminate cash donations. Cash donations are the best way that we can help out people during a disaster. So we're looking to work with an agency to help us accept that and then another agency to distribute it. As we've said, we're gonna be running some test shots on the RAVE system, our new mass notification system, to make sure that's working properly, evaluating, planning, training, and exercise so that we can start bringing in what folks need. We're gonna be conducting some more training on our, for our EOC staff, our Emergency Operations Center staff. And then it's time, every year, we have to revise 20% of our plans, so we're rolling right into that again. And severe weather, which has been minimal, but along with that, I do have some concerns about potential droughts coming up. As you might have heard, Des Moines has started implementing parts of this drought plan and we'll be closely monitoring that to see the impacts on the county for that. And again, we're gonna continue our discussions with the microgrid capabilities. So with that, I open it up to any questions you might have.
With the droughts getting potentially worse, I suppose we're probably looking at burn bans also.
That would be a logical... We had a whole bunch of field fires as we transitioned from winter to spring. Those have diminished slightly, but as we monitor those and if there's an increase of those, we consult with the fire chiefs. The fire chiefs are the ones that request it and then we work with them to submit it on down to the state fire marshal's office.
So the state fire marshal has to approve any burn bans in a county? Is that...
Approve is, I'm not quite sure the word, they are the ones that publish them essentially. It becomes the official place with it. We put together a letter, sent it on down there and then they posted on their website.
And does that then get posted on our Story County website automatically?
We publish it on our portion of the Story County website.
Good, if we get it on the homepage for the county's website as well.
Any other questions?
I think you answered mine in regards to the new alert system. I guess my one would be, do you have a kind of, what is your timeframe? That you hope to have everything kind of all complete or?
July 1st.
July 1st.
It goes active, the old system will not work anymore and the new system will become active at that time.
Well, it's simply because Story County alerts or is it going to be, are they using the acronym RAVE?
We are using, we've left the surface to look the same, so it's Story County, Iowa alerts.
Good, because RAVE does not tell you anything about what it's about. That's almost unfortunate.
Yep, that's why, this is underneath the surface and it's just connections to be able to help out our residents.
Good, thank you.
Supervisor Basil, did you have any additional questions?
I do not have any additional questions, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks for all of your work, Keith.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have discussion of TIF prioritization funding.
Good morning, Lisa Lanian.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll kick us off just to get the conversation started. A month or so ago, we were in front of the board to discuss the urban rural area projects. As the board recalls, this year is a little bit unique with the revisions to economic development policies and adding some prioritization criteria and language in the economic development process and policies. The process is kind of operating out of sorts a little bit. It does feel kind of awkward. Next year will be a lot better because we're not gonna be already into the process. But just as a reminder, the board added categories to prioritize projects to be added to the urban, to be funded through the urban rural area process. Those are on the front of the memo I submitted last week, but just for those attending, I'll reiterate those. One is to fund eligible projects approved in the county CIP, which would otherwise be funded by general fund dollars. Second is to fund eligible county projects in lieu of increasing general obligation debt. Third is to fund eligible county projects that meet the goals of the strategic plan and last, those projects that come through the urban rural area application process. Those applications right now, that last priority are due June 30th, so in two weeks from this coming Wednesday. I've actually received just one application thus far. But what I wanted to do today was quickly identify those projects that are in the CIP for fiscal year '23, because we've already established the budget for fiscal year '22. And the plan for the urban rural area plan, the projects that we'll be adding this August through December by the board, would be then eligible for financing fiscal year '23. So again, I know it feels awkward right now because next year will make more sense. As you're doing your budget discussions and developing the CIP next calendar year, we'll start the prioritization just at that point in time so that the time that we release for urban rural area projects, one will know if there's potentially any funding to do that project, that, those types of applications. Best guess estimate of what that funding might be and we'll just, the process will be much more smooth. Are there any questions before I just? Just in general, for fiscal year '23, I pulled just out of the capital maintenance plan just those projects that are 100% potentially funded through general fund. So like conservation, they list, energy transfer fund, DNR, conservation reserve. I did not include those in this list, but just without any of the... Any of the projects that have other funding is about $4.87 million. And then the Nevada Field House project is $400,000. That's been our effort to fund, add funding to, by the Board of Supervisors. However, you did not determine, help me with correct language, determine the source of funding for that. And that would again begin fiscal year '23. So the pool of funding is limited, as everyone knows. The broker marker is speaking here, it's awkward this year because we're in the middle of receiving applications too. Maybe we should have taken a stall on that this year and gone through, but hindsight being 2020, it is what it is. I can go over the projects there in the CIP or... or some fundamental decisions the board needs to make. And today is not to make those decisions. Those will be coming in August when we start talking about amending the urban renewal area plan. But will the Nevada Field House, will the source of revenue for that, or source of funding for that be through the TIF funding? And I'm asking these questions now because we need to notify the affected taxing entities of the projects will be in our urban renewal area plan. So there's lots of different moving pieces there that I'm actually trying to figure out how to have them all melt together nicely through this really weird first year of it. And I wanted to get in front of you before we had the projects received too. And I'll be back in front of you on July 7th, once we've received projects for another round of discussions. But let's start to having this priority discussion right now. Do you want to add anything?
Oh, you didn't.
It is, there's no way to get, this year is just going to be strange.
Well, and, you know, as I've said to the board numerous times, TIF funding is, the available TIF funding is a best guess at best. So for, we know when our debt, the debt that we've incurred starts paying off and it is paying off. And as we talked about at budget time, this is the last FY '22 this, next fiscal year is the last payment on the very first bond that we issued for Dakin's Lake. So that means beginning FY '23, we'll have approximately $425,000 available for projects.
Projects all total, yeah.
Projects, period.
And then what are the numbers? I know I've got the list on my desk, but I didn't bring it in today. What are the numbers after that for the next few years?
Well, my best guess is that amount for '23, '24, '25, and '26.
Is the 425?
Yeah, in that neighborhood. Obviously, when I get actuals at fiscal year end, I can update all of these for you. But until then. And then it drops off again for FY '27. That is the year that we pay off another debt. So that goes, then the available funds that goes up to $600,000. And then another one falls off in '28 and it goes up to $775-ish. So as long as you're continuing to just take the 50%, this is what the, this is what.
These are the 50% numbers.
Yeah, and it was a 20-year, so we are done in '32, period.
The TIF.
The TIF.
And so one of the prioritization criteria too is the general obligation debt. Well, it's to fund projects, eligible county projects in lieu of increasing general obligation debt. But there's another way of possibly looking at that. We, all the debt that we assumed for both Dakin's Lake, which is, we haven't come to a moot point, but Tedesco, that does not have penalty for early payoff as well.
So we can pay those off early with the balance as opposed to funding other things or in combination with funding other things?
But the importance of knowing specifically, and again, I'm not expecting this today, but it's just, I'm trying to get heads, we can figure out how to make this work. The importance of knowing what projects, I think ahead of fiscal year '23 that you want to use this source of, for funding, we have to add those projects to the urban renewal area plan.
I'm in.
By, that will start that in earnest in September. While August, you'll start presentations by the urban renewal applicants. The county, I think, to be fair, to notify as part of the consultation meetings with taxing entities, we should know that probably no later than early August. Everything has to be finalized no later than December 1st, certified debt to the county auditor's office. And it's lots of different moving pieces. But the important information to get from the board is what projects will be added to the urban renewal area plan, if any. And if we, if you decide maybe none of the projects, applications are received, meet your criteria, or maybe we don't get any projects other than the one I've already received through the different communities. And there's something, Tedesco is already in the plan, maybe that fund, available funding is used to pay down. There's just lots of different options out there. Which you now have more options to use that since you added the prioritization criteria.
You're going to be on Dakin's and Tedesco.
So on Dakin's, we borrowed 3.185 and that's paid off in FY '22. So I didn't bring the debt schedule in front of me, but 200, or it's approximately a $200, $300,000 payment file. So Tedesco, we borrowed $4 million. And I do not have in front of me, Linda, what's the final, let me see. 3 million still? It does seem high, yeah. I didn't bring the debt schedule with me, so I can't, can't tell you. I can tell you when they pay off. We borrowed 1.5 in '17, 1.5 in '18, and 1 in '19. So '27, '28, '29 is when those pay off.
And you said there's no penalty for paying either of these off early?
Correct.
But Dakin's will be paid off this.
In FY '22, I'll make the final payment on that.
Yeah, we won't be going into any.
Yep.
Yep, okay. So we have the Nevada Field House, $400,000 commitment. And we did not say when we made that commitment, we were paying that from.
We also didn't say it would be, that it would necessarily be in one year.
No, they said that we could spread that out over years.
Yeah, I think, I think the, yeah, I think it was a two year. Was it three?
Three years.
You said three?
I said, I think it was three. We can check that, but. Well, then we have another possible ask coming up.
And it does really become a magical date to know the projects by September at the very latest. That will be added to the, to the plan, urban renewal area plan for funding in fiscal year '23. Ideally August so that we can get notice out for consultation meetings and stuff. So I can, I can go through, I know you've, you've looked at the CIP ad nauseam. And it really is, majority of those projects that I mentioned for fiscal year '23 are conservation projects. But we do have some big ones, the majority of the projects themselves, but not the big ticket items. The big ticket items are really the admin building infill addition here at this, yeah, the infill addition at the admin building. That's estimated, and these are best guess estimates, at $1.5 million. The climate controlled storage at the Justice Center is $1.9 million. So those are the, really, is that 3.4 million? Almost half, over half.
Over half of the.
My sense is that conservation has some other, other funding sources that they're always looking at. But that the infill and the storage are projects that we probably don't have other places to look for money. And, but those are also both tied to the space needs study. And what's the timing on the space needs study?
I don't remember what the date was that we'd have that information back by.
Yeah, Leanne, maybe that's something you'd want to check with Joby. I'd say, how does that fit into your timeframe here? Your timeframe. I can't hear you.
They're doing their tour tours.
They're starting the tours now.
They're moving.
It's moving, but it'd be nice to know if, you know, all debt has been certified, yeah.
So, but yeah, if it's 12, even if it's 12 weeks, that will be finalized at least by December 1st.
Right, right, right.
And so what, what you can do, which I don't necessarily like this, but in the past, we've kind of used a bathtub approach and put, well, it was our first couple of years of doing the urban renewal area applications, we incorporated them all into the plan. And then ultimately, when the debt was certified, it was just those that were going to be approved or funded. And then the following year, we went back and we struck out those ones that weren't funded. So the idea is you have to have in the plan to even have the option to use TIF to fund it.
Gotcha.
I don't like that approach at all because I think sets of expectations that that's going to be the mechanism to fund it. But.
It's confusing.
It is really confusing, especially for those that have to manage it. And well, why is that then?
And does it prevent, does it prevent pursuing funding for those projects that don't get funded? Other avenues?
You mean by adding it into the plan?
Yeah.
It could. I guess if you have someone applying, like another jurisdiction applying for a grant and they would see that's in the urban renewal area plan, they could say, well, you're already getting funding from that mechanism, even though they're not. Or even the county, if we applied for a grant for something with a climate controlled storage. Maybe some opportunity came up and they look at the plan and say, well, you've already said you can use this. Yeah, that's a, that's a point that it could have some impacts on that too.
So question for Lisa Markley. For the $400,000, the Nevada Field House, and if there is another project that comes up where we asked for funding and we were to approve it, what other likely sources of funding would we have in the county's revenues?
Unassigned, the unassigned general fund dollars.
Okay, and what would, and what would we have in unassigned?
Well.
Ballpark.
Yeah, but the amount that I am looking at is probably in the neighborhood of 1.5, 1.6. I'll know more at the end of the fiscal, obviously. Because, because, you know, my last estimates to you were, we're going to come in in the general fund probably at 30-ish percent. So we had about a 5% balance of unassigned, uncommitted type funds.
So that's, so in terms of how much money we have, it depends on when something is going to come due. But that's for what we would be pulling into fiscal '22 as unassigned.
Correct.
Okay. And then the TIF, we don't have that 425 to play around with until FY '23.
Correct, but we have to certify the debt in FY '22.
Got it.
For FY '23.
For FY '22.
For FY '22.
So we're always a year ahead when we're talking TIF.
Okay.
For, for what we're gonna, for what you're going to do with those funds, but we're always a year behind for what we actually get in those funds.
TIF is just such a funny word. I'll just say that.
Yeah, you're going to come before us again and want a little bit more as to what projects we're looking at at that particular time, is what you're saying?
Actually, I did say July 7th is when I would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. July 7th, I'll have, the project deadlines, June 30th. And then I'll get just the, I was going to put them on consent agenda, but. 6th, 7th, July 6th.
Which will have an early deadline because, because of the holiday. I'm just going to throw that out there for you.
Which unfortunately, deadline for this is not until 4/30. Sorry, emailed her to. But hopefully it'll work. Then we could talk, I'll have an idea of what's being asked for a question.
Yes, we won't be making decisions then?
No, we won't be making decisions until, I think I have it for the notices for the consultation meeting, have to go out no later than August 1st. And then I set the consultation meeting on your agenda, on your calendars yesterday or the day before. I think that might be first week in September I set it. I don't have a call off the top of my head. And then that week and the following three weeks, we have presentations by potential applicants. We'll be scheduled at the board meeting. And so we really kind of enter, that third or fourth week of September, start talking about what gets added to the plan and what does not.
So you're not asking us running decisions on July 6th? You're just adding more information?
Just going to, yeah, just going to tell you who's.
Adding more information into our plan.
Who applies how much they're looking at.
Yeah.
Which will just then give you, like, so, so she gets one application and it's for $50,000. So that means there's, are you going to do, what are you going to do with that other $400 or $375 that we're projecting will be available for TIF? Are we going to pay off early? Are we going to fund the Field House? Are we going to?
Gotcha.
What are we going to use those dollars for? Are we going to look at the CIP that she needs, that we need to build in? If the requests come in at, you know, $700,000, then we know, okay, we have requests of $700,000. We're going to have to, we're not going to be, we don't know what we're going to look at for funding for the other projects.
Gotcha, thank you. Examples are helpful.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's it for today. I mean, it's about clear as mud, and I apologize for that, but.
TIF is confusing, as we both said.
Just keep, just keep me answering the same questions to the.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it helps me, it's the first year going through it this way and it will get a lot easier next year too.
Supervisor Basil, did you have any additional questions?
I just had one question for Lisa Markley. And I'm going to have you back way up to the beginning of the conversation. When you were saying in FY '27, we would have $700,000 available? Roughly $700,000?
$600,000.
$600.
28, in FY '27, around $600,000.
Okay.
At 28, about $775,000.
And then we have that. Is that only if we don't spend anything? Or that, that's the amount that will come available regardless of what we did in FY '26?
No, so the way this works is whatever you, if you don't certify the full amount of debt, which you've already got, what I'm, what I'm giving you is the remaining after the cert, after the already debt, bonded debt we have, okay? So those pay off in '27 and '28, the next two. Pay off in '27 and '28. So what I'm saying is, these are the available dollars if you certify debt toward those available dollars, be it CIP projects, be it county, or projects that get requested from the cities, be it an ask for some other sort that fits into the urban renewal.
And if we don't use it, it goes back to those jurisdictions.
And if you don't use it and don't certify it, then we only certify what we need for the debt that's already bonded.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're rolling, you're going to have these dollars. It's a, are we going to certify any debt toward these dollars?
Gotcha. Thanks, I know you've explained that to me.
It's very confusing.
So that's what makes some early prepayments an attractive option in here.
If that's what you decide to do, yeah. I mean, obviously. I mean, obviously, that's, that's always a possibility. Yeah, what gets, what gets money eventually for me then is the fact that, you know, you certify a debt in this year for this year, a certified debt. You, you certify some projects, but it takes them four years to draw down on those projects. So we've got the, the dollars sitting in there still that they haven't drawn down on. You know, and that, we run into that with, with a couple of the entities that, that don't draw down the dollars very fast. Those dollars are for that project, we can't change that. We can't go put them back in and say, oh, they didn't spend them.
You don't lose them if they have not spent them during the fiscal year, though.
No.
Okay.
And they don't draw them down until the project is done.
Correct.
So that's.
So that makes it an additional complicated.
Yeah, and Prairie Railroad is a prime example of that. Two of the years, the, there was 207,000 certified for Prairie Railroad one year and 107,000 for Prairie Railroad the next year. And the, there was, there was, he, he was able to access some state dollars, so he needed to spend those first, I think it was $100,000 if I'm not mistaken. So he needed to spend those first. So I, I mean, I think at this point in time, we still have probably $50,000 or $60,000 sitting in our TIP fund for Prairie Railroad when they get.
And how long's that been, since that was certified?
Yeah, that was one.
It was one of the first years, 16, 15, 16?
I was going to say, I thought it was before I was here, but I don't know.
It's been a while.
Okay. Is there going to be a use for that? Is that still?
Yeah, I've already, I, I stay on top.
Was it the zeroing to 65, or?
I stay on top of that and, and question every time a claim comes through for Prairie Railroad, whether, should this be from urban renewal? Where are we paying for this from?
So they would pay the 65, that one will go on.
They're assuring me that there's, there's costs that are going to be incurred for that.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? I don't have any additional questions. And then if you ever do have questions, I can go to Lisa and have her help me explain again.
And then we go to Lucy and Basil.
It's a team effort, it definitely is. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is good to have a both of you here.
Yes.
To this, yeah, I appreciate it.
And I appreciate that Supervisor Marken say it to us about 10 times, we'll get it.
Oh. I haven't been limited to 10 yet. It, it is, and yeah.
When you don't deal with it every single day, it's good to have a more thorough discussion on it.
Especially as the program's changing.
Right, exactly, exactly. All right, next we'll move on to, we've got considerations of the June 8th, 2021 minutes.
Move approval of minutes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Marken?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Next we'll move on to consideration of personnel actions.
Aye, move approval of the action as listed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Marken?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Next we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the items on today's consent, today's consent agenda?
Move approval of consent agenda, it's presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Basil?
Aye.
And? Aye.
Haddon's, aye. Going on to the last page, looks like we are down to public forum number two.
Public hearing, I know.
No, there's no public hearing items.
No, this, that.
Additional items, you have, no, no, yeah, I, I looked at, that's as well. Upcoming agenda items. Oh, yes, excuse me, upcoming agenda items. There any upcoming agenda items? I know that, Leanne, were you saying you'd have something coming up on the agenda? Maybe not.
Just the urban.
Just urban renewal.
Not till July.
Right, and that's not till July. Okay. Moving on, public forum number two, open this, open this up, comments for public on the items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So we'll open public forum number two. If you would like to make comments, please reach your hand on Zoom or unmute your phone. Not seeing any, we will close public forum number two. And next rep for liaison assignments committee meeting, not mates, and any, excuse me, any announcements?
Oh, I don't know, it's been real busy, and it's, it looks like, um, just a second. We had the Headwaters WMA meeting last week, which was very, very good to have a meeting in person, and I think we're headed to having lots more in-person meetings. So people have met each other on Zoom in the past year and a half and get, can actually meet each other in person. I'm attending a pre-application conference, a couple for the Office of Chief Information Officer about the broadband, state broadband money, that's on Thursday. And I think tomorrow I'm also, there's also one on, on the, our, the American Rescue Plan Funds regarding water and wastewater treatment. So looking forward to that, getting more information on how we can use, utilize those funds. We'll probably off on Friday and back in on Monday. So that's about all I've got right now.
Supervisor Basil?
Yes, I have a Story County Housing Trust Fund meeting this afternoon. Iowa Hunger Coalition meeting tomorrow, scan meeting on Friday. I will be back in the office on Friday. I believe that's it, I've, the League of Women Voters is working on starting a transportation study. So they may, representative from the league may be reaching out to folks in the community and you, Lisa and Linda, just to ask some questions about transportation needs. I gave them Sandra's name also. They're, they sound really excited about learning more and seeing how they can just identify opportunities.
So Latifah, could you provide me that contact person? I'm on the Accessible Transportation Community Initiative that's with, I mean, I know Carla's on it. It's got United Way, it's being facilitated by Easter Seals, it has heard us, CyRides on it. And really kind of looking at kind of the gaps in services, barriers, strengths, what's going on, kind of different funding sources. I mean, they're looking at things pretty broad. Instead of reinventing a wheel, the league might want to see, you know, is there information that, when that's available, that they can pull from that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they'll be thrilled, because that, that's exactly where they're at right now, is just trying to figure out where, where they need to be going for information, what information's available. So yes, absolutely, I'll send you.
Yeah, because I think it works, works for folks, otherwise you're, you're getting, you know, one study for another study, and if they know what's kind of already going on, it may be helpful to conjoin all that information.
Definitely.
Do you, do you know, do they have a scope of their study, what questions, maybe questions they're trying to answer?
I believe a couple of them were meeting this morning to talk about that, and then they're planning to lay everything out at the annual meeting on Thursday.
Good, good, that will be really helpful to have, so we know who can get information to them on certain things.
Right.
Been interested in looking at that.
Yeah, thank you.
I would too, thanks.
That's all I've got.
Yeah, thank you. Otherwise for me, I am out tomorrow through the rest of the week, and will be back in the office on Tuesday, the 22nd.
There, you're up tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, I bet you're up starting Thursday.
Yeah, no, but not tomorrow.
Okay, I'll try to, I will be, Latifah, you said you're back Friday, because I'm going to be off on Friday.
Yes, I will be in the office on Friday, still checking my emails and available tomorrow also, so if you need me.
Yeah, I'll be checking my emails as well, too. Schedule-wise, there's a chance I maybe get back in Monday afternoon, but definitely on Tuesday. All right, anything else? That is their motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Marken?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
And it's aye, we are adjourned.